The call out of recess Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on petition number 21P 1591. GSG Wind LLC's request for special use permit to construct a wind energy conversion system within Lee Center, Sublet and West Brooklyn Townships here in Lee County. For those of you who want to be participating with us on Zoom and somehow are hearing this without being able to get onto the Zoom platform, the meeting ID, the Zoom meeting ID is 915-3923-9154. The password is 209840. If you don't want to or can't get on Zoom, but you still want to be able to, while not participate, at least watch and listen to the proceedings this evening, you can do it, do so on YouTube. In order to do that, in your search, go to the youtube.com website. In the search bar, type Lee County, IL, short for Illinois, zoning board of appeals. Don't be concerned with upper or lowercase letters, find the session date you want, which is presumably today, the 12th, May 12th. Click on it and you should be seeing us. Speaking of seeing us, if any of you are wondering why some of us are dressed a little differently tonight. Ms. Duffy notified us all, presumably all, she's real good at notifications. If you didn't get a notice, I suspect it's your own fault that. The air conditioning in the old Lee County courthouse was being either worked on or replaced. And at the time she called, it was 85 degrees in her office here on the third floor. So her email message said, dress appropriately. And you look around the room and you can see what everybody, all the different people thinks are appropriate. If you've got any questions about the technical stuff I explained, you may call Ms. Duffy's hotline, 815-973-3449. All right, I will note for purposes of data collection, the presence of the Chair of the ZBA, Mr. Forster. It's Vice Chair, Mr. Burrow, Mr. Hughes is present, Mr. Pratt is present, Mr. Myers is present, Ms. Duffy is present. Ms. Henkel's present, Mr. Boonstra is present, Mr. Berry for the petitioner is present, along with it looks like two representatives of the petitioner. Jonathan from Lee County IT is present, Kelly, the court reporter and himself. I see one, two, I think, interested parties in person. That makes 16. 16 folks here in person. On Zoom, we have one interested party and I guess that's it. So on Zoom, we have one interested party making total attendance tonight at 17. All right, when we left off, Mr. Berry, you wanted to present some more evidence and you certainly may.
Thank you. Without further delay, I would like to call Ms. Abigail Bucta to the stand.
Abigail, I don't care if you stand up. Careful, I'm the ones could fall off. You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth, oh, truth, and nothing but the truth. All right, now, the first advice, including me, to witnesses is you gotta practically swallow this microphone. And I mean it, you gotta get right up next to it.
Thank you, Judge. Could you please state your name for the record and spell it?
Abigail Bucta, A-B-I-G-A-I-L-B-U-C-H-T-A.
And could you please tell us a little bit about your background, Ms. Bucta?
Go to the next slide, please. I'm a senior consultant at Sergeant Lundie's, as a part of Sergeant Lundie's consulting group. I'm responsible for providing technical oversight and management of renewable energy projects.
Do me a favor and the court putter, everybody has a different way of speaking, but you're going kind of fast.
Understood.
It's easy to do, that's not a criticism, it's just a please.
Yep. I have a BA, Bachelor's of Science in Architectural Engineering with a structural focus from Milwaukee School of Engineering. I have been practicing, I've been working at Sergeant Lundie for approximately 12 years. And I had a little interim stint as a project manager for a construction company. And I've been a licensed PE in the state of Illinois since 2013.
And can you tell us what PE stands for?
Professional Engineer.
Thank you. So you have experience preparing or overseeing the preparation or analyzing decommissioning plans for wind energy projects, is that correct?
Yes, I have been involved in the analysis, supervising the analysis of two of them. And our team at SNL has performed an additional four, including a total of three in Illinois.
Did you supervise the preparation of the independent engineering analysis for deconstructing the wind turbines at the GSG project, and I mean the current wind turbines?
Yes.
And did the analysis evaluate the proposed deconstruction techniques for the GSG repower or the proposed GSG repower?
Yes, we considered both the tilt fell method and the modified tilt fell method or energetic felling approaches.
And I, obviously, we see that you have a PowerPoint presentation. So I guess I'd ask you at this point, if you could walk us through some of those slides when it comes to describing the methods you just referred to.
Understood. The tilt felt, tilt fell method includes a series of cuts at the tower base to facilitate felling via a cable attached to the top, which is then attached to a vehicle down on the ground that pulls the tower over. The hinges are cut such that the tower remains stable until the cable is pulled. And our analysis included a computer model of the tower, considering of critical configurations to ensure stability. And we determined the maximum tension required in the cable to pull over the tower and the maximum wind speed at which the operation can safely take place.
Next slide, please.
We also analyzed the modified tilt fell method, which is also called energetic felling. It involves a series of cuts at the tower base similar to the modified tilt fell. But instead of pulling it over with a long cable, you installed targeted charges to use as the catalyst to fell the turbine. The benefits to this type of felling is that no large crane is required. It's rather fast compared to the other methods and it is safer for the crew doing the work. The downsides include the blast effects and the noise, which we'll discuss.
Now, you referenced the noise on the slide there. Did you examine how the sound emissions from the energetic felling method might affect nearby structures?
Yes, we evaluated the sound emission expected from the size of the charges that are typically used. We considered a distance of 1,000 feet at which the level, the sound level will have dissipated to below 140 decibels, which is similar to fireworks. There is an internationally safe limit for an impulse noise, meaning a one-time event rather than a sustained one. And this falls within that limit. And we'd like to note that the Illinois Pollution Control Code does not restrict noise received inland Class C agricultural areas. And the noise from construction is also exempt.
Thank you. And did you, did your evaluation include an analysis or assessment of the impact on the energetic felling method, I guess both methods, on nearby structures?
Yes, the main ground vibration from the event, from the decommissioning will occur from the impact of the nacelle and the tower blades on the ground. We quantify the ground vibration and recommend that approximately 1, 1,100 feet be maintained when possible from the impact, point of impact to the closest structures. In review of the map of the project, it is possible to orient most of the turbines so they are within that. So residential structures are outside of that buffer zone. There are two locations that are inside that range. And however, they are expected to have a minimum fell distance of 875 feet, meaning that's the minimum distance the nacelle would fall from the structure. And our analysis in and of itself is inherently conservative, meaning that the threshold that we are considering is based on old or historic buildings, which would be would have a great there would be a greater impact from, or potential impact from these vibrations. And we also consider a 5% probability of that occurring, a threshold damage occurring, meaning that potential paint cracking or other very, very minor cosmetic issues. So there's a very low probability of any damage even to historic structures.
And I think you mentioned that there were two residences with, within 1,100 feet. Are both of those residences in Lee County or is one in LaSalle County?
One is outside of Lee County.
And so for the residence in Lee County that's less than 1,100 feet, is that residence, in your opinion, an old structure?
No.
And is that because, when was that residence constructed as far as you're aware?
As far as I'm aware, it was constructed in 1999.
Okay, so again, the concerns you would have are primarily about relating to paint chipping and cracking. Those primarily relate to old structures and not more modern homes, correct?
That's correct. And again, there's a 5%, less than a 5% chance of that occurring.
So a very small chance of even that happening, even if the the residences with, is less than 1,100 feet, correct?
Correct.
And is there, the slide mentions the orientation of the felling. Is there a way to direct the felling of the, of the machine in such a way as to further minimize any potential impact on structures?
Yes, as a, as a part of the decommissioning, the direction of the turbine is the hinges are cut such that the turbine will fell in a specific direction. And the cable is pulled in a specific direction or the, the chargers are set, such that the tower falls in a specific direction.
And in your report, do you recommend that the towers be felled away from the residences or structures?
Yes, any, any structure is close to the 1,100 feet, the tower should be felled such that that distance is maximized.
And is there a way to try to orient the, the blades and the nacelle when the tower is felled to reduce the, to further reduce the impact when it hits the ground?
Yes, so we, our analysis considers the nacelle, the top section of the tower and the blades all hitting the ground at the exact same time. Our recommendation is that the nacelle be oriented perpendicular to the ground such that the blades will hit first. And that will help dampen the impact of the nacelle and the tower. So each component hits at a separate instant, so then that vibration is damped. So that's a further conservatism in our analysis.
And is that because the blades are able to absorb some of the impact before it hits the ground?
Yes.
Okay, now, I think this is kind of cool, but the next two slides are videos that show the energetic felling method, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so at this point, I'll let you just direct our intrepid IT director over there to run the video whenever you're ready.
Yeah, go ahead and play. So you'll observe that there's going to be a cloud of dust, that's the detonation occurring. And then shortly after, you'll see the tower leaning and falling. And I'm going to note, I had just discussed the, the blades hitting first and the nacelle oriented perpendicular. Other sites have been decommissioned with more of a nosedive condition, in which case the nacelle's nose hits the ground first. That is not the recommended use in this case, it causes more impact to the field and you have to dig the nacelle out.
So I call it the face plant technique, but, or orientation. But if you use the, the orientation that's shown in the video here, it essentially leaves a bigger divot, correct?
That's correct.
And do you want to run it again?
Yeah, we can run this one one more time, then we'll run the next one. If you watch really closely, you'll see the blade, the lower blade hit first an instant before the nacelle does, and it kind of crumbles. And if you want to go to the next video, you can advance this one to approximately 20 seconds. 20?
All right, T. guys said it's frozen, give it a minute.
And while we're waiting, where do these, you know which project this video is associated with?
Crescent Ridge.
And that's in Bureau County, correct?
I believe so.
I'm sure everybody understands technical glitches and rebooting become a part of our daily lives.
Similar to the other one, you see the cloud from the detonation. And then it falls.
Maybe show it one more time, please. And again, is there a way you can describe, I mean, as I said, I, I call it the face plant method or orientation. But in that instance, can you describe how the other orientation, the 90-degree orientation would be different compared to that video?
Yeah, so can you just show the, the first screen of the video again? So the way that the turbine is, the, the nacelle would be turned such that the blades would impact the ground first. And it would be turned 90 degrees, the blades would impact first and they would absorb an amount of the impact prior to the nacelle hitting the ground.
So instead of the front cone of the nacelle going straight into the ground and causing that divot, instead the blades would hit first and the side of the nacelle would hit, hit the ground, correct?
That's correct. And the blades will not stick out of the ground, they will be kind of crumbled, crushed underneath the weight of the, the rest of the tower.
Judge, that's all the questions I have for this witness.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Boonstra. Ms. Henkel?
The, I'm sorry, your slideshow, or your slide, and I'm not sure which page, I don't have a copy. But it reference three residences within 1,100 feet, within the 1,100-foot range. So could you please clarify that?
Yes, sorry, the the third residence is within 1,100 feet. The felling distance is 1,086 feet. It is very close to the total 1,100 feet, so I didn't discuss it in detail, the other two were closer.
Okay. If this method is used and you do use explosives and damage does occur to any of the residences, do you know if the company is going to correct those damages?
That is outside my scope.
Okay. What kind of damage to the ground occurs with this type of felling?
There, there will be disturbance, but as, as discussed, the the nosedive method where you have to dig out the nacelle and you have to, you'd have to disturb a lot more of the ground using that particular method.
And then what kind of debris is left behind?
That is outside my scope.
Okay, nothing further.
Ms. Duffy?
Are you aware of any underground pipelines within the footprint of the farm?
I am not aware of any.
And you said when the blades fall, they, they're crumbled and crushed?
Yes.
The blades are made of fiberglass?
I believe so, yes.
So that'd be more splinters instead of crumbled?
That word could be used.
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Forster?
Just a quick question, are you there when any of these are done?
I have not been.
You have not been, okay. That's all.
Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, first question. You said there's three, there's three residences, one is definitely in Lee County. Is that other one that's kind of borderline, is that in Lee County or is that in LaSalle County?
I, I don't recall.
Okay. Next question is of that one or two that are in Lee County, are they participating, residences of participating landowners or non-participating landowners?
That is, that's outside my scope, I'm sorry.
You said the, the sound is similar to, to fireworks? Or are you talking, the impact, the sound from the, the charge or the, from the impact of the ground?
From the charge.
From the charge. And how many, you said this is, that the energized fell method is the faster method?
That's correct.
How many would, how many would you expect to be going off in the course of a day?
That would depend on the demolition team.
Do you have a guesstimate?
I, I do not.
Okay. The ground shock, what would you compare that, I mean, that impact, can you draw some comparison to what that would be? That ground shock would be like in, within that 1,000-foot area?
I, I'm not sure of a good comparison. I do know that the criteria that are considered, they consider these, these vibrations as continuous. And that's what the criteria that we're utilizing is based on, is a continuous vibration. And, and this is not, and it's still less than that criteria in all but two of those cases. So I, I don't have a good comparison, but it, it is not yeah, I don't, I don't have a good comparison, I'm sorry.
The, and you may not be aware of the specifics because it was done separately from your study. But the decommissioning plan that's proposed for the new turbines is basically going to be to cut them up, to, you know, drop them in sections, cut them up, apparently to salvage materials. Would that be your assumption?
That is another method that can be used.
Okay. I assume, I'm going to assume that's substantially slower than what you're proposing in either of these two methods?
Yes, it is, it is slower and it is more dangerous for the, the people doing the work.
Okay. The cut and fell method, and again, this, you weren't sure how many they would be doing in demolition. But in the cut and fell method versus the energized fell, comparison to how much quicker?
For the, the traditional tilt and fell, they have to bring in a crane to put, to attach the cable to the top of the structure. So it will take more time to perform.
Any idea?
I, I'm not sure of schedule.
Okay. I think that's all my questions.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes, we've had some of our discussions along this line. Anyway.
Not good enough.
The, okay. Anyway. Is there any idea, so you're not saving any salvageable material by dropping these in this method? Is that what I understand?
Your voice is trailing off, I couldn't hear you either.
Anyway, is there any, in these two methods, are you salvaging any materials for scrap?
That is outside my scope.
Okay. Is there some reason that you, we've got a situation now where they're taking them down a piece at a time? Is there a reason why you don't take the blades? Is there a reason why you don't take the blades off and take them to sell off separately? Is it just, what's the reason that they don't take them apart?
In this case, it's the, it's the time and the safety of the demolition process.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Maher. If it's safer and saves time, why don't we decommission the newer ones the same way?
It is my understanding that they would like to predict a higher cost upfront such that they're, it's a conservative consideration.
No other questions. Mr. Pratt.
So on your video, you showed both of them nose down. Why did they do them that way? If you're saying the other way is a better way?
It can depend on the project. I've seen other ones where they were unable to turn the turbines for one reason or another, and that limited the, how they were able to bring them down. I am not sure the reasoning for these ones being nosedive turbines.
Oh, is there an assurance that they won't do them that way on this project?
That, the assurance is outside of my scope. Our recommendation is that they fell them perpendicularly.
Do the landowners have any say in how this is done?
That is also outside my scope.
My concern is when they go down, do you know how much is left in the ground when they go to the process of digging that out that the farmer has to deal with?
I will.
That's not a question.
Well, I'd say, does she have any knowledge of that?
Okay.
I'm sorry, that was outside the scope of our analysis.
When you first talked about the tilt and fell method, you mentioned the wind being a concern.
Yes.
Wind is not a concern with the energetic fell?
It is, and we do take that into consideration. There are also wind limitations on that.
No further questions.
And just so the record's clear, because I didn't exactly hear you say it, your analysis that you performed was for the existing towers, is that correct?
That's correct.
Real quick, do you have any idea of the decibel level when the, when the tower actually hits the ground, either under tilt fell or energetic method?
I do not. I, we consider the decibel of the blast to be more conservative.
Okay, all right. Interested parties, I'd like to start in the room. Questions of this, excuse me, questions of this witness? Yes, ma'am. It's a new day, so name and.
Lorraine Kettrell, 2180 Richardson Road, Amboy. Is there going to be a problem?
You're even farther away, so get right, I mean, like you're kissing the microphone.
Is there going to be a problem with the fiberglass shreds just being blown around in the air?
The limitations on the wind for the project should, should help reduce that, but ultimately the cleanup is outside of the scope of our analysis.
Do you have any idea how far it would travel if it was 11 mile an hour winds?
I do not, I'm sorry.
And then when, when you go to take them down, I'm assuming all the oil or any kind of toxic materials will be out of the turbines when they're falling?
So the scope of this analysis was for the, the felling and the impact, the physical impact of the turbines, the mechanical components was outside the scope of this discussion.
So is it possible that as they fall, they might burst open and release stuff?
That's outside of our scope, I'm.
Okay, thank you.
That it? Any other folks in the room? Okay, turning to Zoom, questions from the Zoomer. Sorry for being the boomer.
Yes, please. This is Mary Mock. Are you aware of, or is it in the scope of your analysis, the impact on any wells or the water table? Were wells or the water table included in your analysis?
The wells and the water table were not included in the analysis.
Okay. Did you research if there were any pipelines in the area? You weren't aware of any, did you actually research if there were pipelines in those zones?
They were not considered in the analysis.
In other words, they weren't researched? So it's not that there are no pipelines?
I'll let her answer the question.
Okay, I'm trying to clarify, sorry.
That's all right.
They were not included in the scope.
Okay. The plume of dirt in the video sort of indicated that it digs quite deeply into the dirt. How deep do you actually clean up the fragments?
That's also outside the scope of this analysis.
Okay, and then the zones that you would fell these wind turbines in, you indicated that they would be felled in different directions, but did you consider that that may be felling into non-participating fields, or you might have to use adjacent fields for attaching cables? And was that considered?
The primary focus of those recommendations were based on the distances of the residences and other nearby structures.
So was that distance calculated all around in all distances, or depending on wind or something of the sort, I'm just thinking that it can't all be just three homes?
Can you replay the last few words?
I'm not quite sure, I'm not quite sure how to phrase it, and I can't read it in front of me, so when you considered the felling, you named three homes that were in the zone. Was that inclusive in a full radius from the wind turbine, or was it only in optimal sort of directions?
That was based on the recommended direction and the location where the nacelle would impact.
Okay, so the recommended directions then don't require any adjacent non-participating farmland to be used, is that correct?
That was outside the scope of this analysis.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Berry, any follow-up?
Yeah, a couple of quick follow-up questions. The first one is, you talked about three different techniques, two of which were discussed in your analysis, and the third was brought up by the board. Those techniques are the energetic felling method, which we saw videos about, the tilt fell method, and then what would you call the third method that was discussed?
I believe sometimes it's called the reverse build.
Okay, thank you. Which one, with respect to the reverse build, does it have, you said it was the least safe of the three techniques, is that correct, when it comes to the workers?
That's correct.
And which, which technique of the three has the greatest overall impact on the land or the farmland or the soil? And I don't mean, you know, we've seen the videos that show the impact from the turbine falling, but which technique has the greater overall impact on a landowner's property?
That would also be the reverse build.
And is that because it involves significantly higher uses of cranes?
That's correct. There'd be a lot more equipment on site for a longer period of time.
And those cranes are really heavy, right?
Correct.
Now, you said that the evaluation as to whether pipelines are in the ground out near the turbines and whether there are any water sources or wells near the turbines was outside the scope of your report, correct?
Yes.
But isn't it also true that on page 20 of the report, it states, and I quote, "In general, felling should be away from any relatively close structures and avoid buried structures or operating wells," end quote?
That's correct.
So that's in your report, and you're, so with respect to the wells, the recommendation in your report is to avoid them, correct?
Correct.
And, and so you mentioned earlier that it's the job of the, I'll call it the felling contractor to determine and manage the felling if the technique is approved, is that right?
That's correct.
And so it would be their job to determine whether there are wells or pipelines in the ground, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. You may step down, thank you. I will mark the witness's presentation as petitioner's number five, and it is admitted. You may proceed, or anything further?
Yes, I'd like to recall Mr. Carter Wells briefly as a witness.
It's a new day, Mr. Carter, Mr. Wells, so solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
And I'll remind you to speak closely to the microphone. And if you could remind us your name?
Carter Wells, that's C-A-R-T-E-R-W-E-L-L-S.
Could you also remind us who your employer is?
Leeward Renewable Energy.
And can you remind us what your position of employment is and your relationship with the GSG Wind Farm?
So I am a chief, sorry, senior development associate, and I am the lead developer of the GSG Wind Farm for the, for the REPower.
Thank you. Mr. Wells, can you clarify what the applicant or petitioner is requesting with respect to the deconstruction of the existing GSG wind turbines and other equipment?
As part of this special use permit application, the applicant is requesting to allow for the deconstruction of the 19 wind turbines currently cited in Lee County as part of the GSG Wind Project.
And is that request also laid out in portions of the permit application?
It is, yes, I believe, well, I know that the permit application requests the allowance to deconstruct the turbines, the 19 turbines currently in Lee County, and I believe section 1.5 of the application gives a construction timeline for what that decommissioning looks like with respect to the construction of the new turbines.
Thank you. What plan will the project or the applicant follow for purposes of decommissioning the existing turbines and other equipment?
So the applicant, GSG, is requesting to decommission the existing turbines in accordance with the decommissioning analysis that Sergeant Lundie created for these 19 existing turbines. And the applicant is committing to submitting a decommissioning plan for the existing turbines to the county prior to any issuance of building permits for the project. And this would allow the, you know, a decommissioning plan to be submitted to the county and then be approved before any building permit applications would be issued.
So as with the other decommissioning plan for the future turbines if they're built, would this decommissioning plan you just referenced allow the county zoning officer or zoning administrator and the county engineer to review and approve that plan?
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Wells, there were some questions asked of Ms. Buck about debris and cleanup if the techniques that Sergeant Lundie recommended were followed. Who would be responsible for cleaning up the debris once a turbine was fell?
So the applicant, GSG, would be responsible for cleaning up any debris that would be generated from the decommissioning of the existing turbines. So, you know, there would be crews following, you know, the decommissioning crew to clean up any debris that would be left there on the property. And the applicant also is committed to, you know, addressing any damage to nearby structures that is caused from the felling of the existing turbines.
And with respect to the cleaning up of the debris, what's the basis for that obligation, if you're aware?
So we have an obligation in the leases and easements that we sign with the participating landowners to, you know, clean up any debris that would be left on the property and to, you know, leave the, the land in its existing condition. So we need to correct any sort of impact that we have on the land through decommissioning, construction, or operation of the project.
And is it your understanding that there would also be an obligation to clean up the debris and restore the soil under the AMA that the project has entered into with the Illinois Department of Agriculture?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, last couple of questions here. I want to ask you a question about a parcel identification, excuse me, a, a, a particular piece of land, a parcel with a parcel ID number of 19-22-05-400-011. And just as a preview, this particular parcel that's assigned to this number has a wind turbine and an access road on it. Can you tell us a little bit about that parcel, please?
Yes, so this specific parcel, so the way that the county addresses, you know, the parcel, so when an access road and wind turbine is installed on a parcel, the county splits out a separate parcel to contain the access road and the turbine pad. So the parcel that you referenced, the parcel number four, is a parcel that contains an access road and a turbine pad for a wind turbine that is not part of the GSG Wind Project.
So, so did the applicant intend to include that parcel as part of this application?
So that parcel identification number was not meant to be included in our petition for special use. That parcel is part of a greater 60-acre parcel that is adjacent to the substation that the project connects into. So we have an easement on the greater 60-acre parcel, if you can imagine a box, 60 acres, and then the turbine, road, and pad parcel that you referenced, the number four, is essentially a cutout of that 60-acre parcel. So the applicant does not have land control over that parcel, and therefore, you know, it's not necessary to be included as part of the project.
So since that parcel, and again, it's number 19-22-05-400-011, was inadvertently included in the application, to the extent it's required or applicable, would you seek to amend the application to exclude that parcel?
Yes.
All right, let's talk about the larger parcel, of which that other parcel is a part, and that parcel ID, and I think you referenced a 60-acre parcel, correct?
Correct, yes.
That parcel ID number is 19-22-05-400-013, correct?
That sounds correct, yes.
What is the nature of the land control that the applicant has over that larger parcel?
So this larger 60-acre parcel is adjacent to the ComEd substation that the project connects into. So the applicant has an easement over a portion of that parcel. I believe it is a 33-foot wide strip of land that stretches, you know, northeast from Tower Road, connecting, I believe it goes just about 500 feet to the ComEd substation. And the purpose of this easement is to allow for the electrical collection cable that comes from the turbines, connects into the substation. So that easement is to allow for, you know, the collection cable to reach. So that easement is to allow for, you know, the the collection cable to reach the substation on this said 60-acre parcel. So, you know, that the land control that the applicant has over that parcel is limited to this 33, I believe it is a 33-foot wide strip of land that stretches about 500 feet from the north side of Tower Road to the ComEd substation.
And i- is that easement along the southern edge of the 60-acre parcel?
It is, yes. It it starts, you know, on the southern edge of the property and from Tower Road extends northwest about 500 feet to the ComEd substation.
So the reality is of the 60 acres, you're just using a little sliver in the southern part, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And so for purposes of the permit application, you really just need permission or the per, you really just need the permit to cover that 500-foot strip that over which the project has land control, correct?
That's correct, yes.
That's all I have, Judge.
Mr. Boonstra. Ms. Henkel? Ms. Duffy? Mr. Forster?
No.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes. The, you heard him mention previously that there's at least one, possibly two of those properties that were are within 1,100 feet that would be in Lee County. Do you know if they're participating or non-participating?
Both of the residences that are within the 1,100-foot radius are participating residences.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes, it's a 60-acre parcel we're talking about here recently. Who, who's the land title to? Who's the owner of this parcel, then?
I believe the land is is owned by Sean Luffelman.
Okay.
But it it could be under his father's name, which is Eugene.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Meyer?
Mr. Pratt? Do you know if the lease holder that you're leasing from, does it, do they have any say in the felled method or in the cleanup?
So to my knowledge, the leases don't specify a method of decommissioning. But in the lease, we are obligated to, you know, remove any project infrastructure, you know, within the requirements of the ordinance and AMA. We're required to decommission the project upon its, the end of its life.
No further questions.
All right, I've I've got one quick one. The easement that you're talking about on the bigger parcel, I mean, I think I know the answer to this, but just so we're clear, is that an underground or what someone, some people call an air rights easement?
So
Is the cable underground or is it above the, is it a?
The cable is underground for the large majority of the roughly 500-foot easement. And then the cable does come out of the ground just before the substation in order to connect into the infrastructure, which is, you know, suspended in the air within the substation. So the only time the cable is out of the ground is a short transition distance between the underground cabling and the substation infrastructure.
All right, thank you. And is parcel, the the bigger parcel, 19-22-05-400, no, 013, is that, is that included in your application?
It is, yes.
All right, interested parties. Yes, ma'am.
How is it decided which turbines are going to not be replaced?
If, did you hear the que, I'm sorry, could you just go to the microphone a little closer?
Oh.
It could be my hearing, but.
How is it decided on which turbines will not be replaced?
So there are a lot of factors that go into, you know, deciding, I guess you could say, which turbines to be replaced. The way that the applicant has gone about making that decision is not necessarily taking one turbine and deciding whether or not to replace that specific turbine. What we do is, you know, we're we're decommissioning the 19 turbines that are in Lee County. And we're doing our best to ensure that, you know, participating landowners who, you know, want to continue participating in the project and want to have turbines are able to continue to participate. So if we remove a turbine or decommission a turbine on someone's property, we do everything we can to to replace that turbine and ensure that the landowner can, you know, continue participating in the project.
Is it possible that if the to replay, if you're going to replace a turbine for their property owner, is it possible to have it moved to a different location?
So with respect to placement of the turbines, you know, we have to comply with the setbacks that are prescribed in the ordinance, and so that is our guidance. You know, along with other factors, including environmental factors. You know, like I mentioned the other night, trying to avoid any sort of communication paths. So there are a lot of factors that go into the ultimate placement of turbines. So it's it's not as simple as just moving the turbine to any location. There are a lot, there's a lot of thought that goes into selecting a turbine location.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Zoomer?
Yes, please.
Sure.
A quick question. I heard a lot of numbers of 512 non-participating residents. How many are, how many more are participating landowners? We have 512 non-participating residents. How many are participating residents?
So I believe the 512 number that you're referencing is from the noise and shadow flicker models that were created for the project. And to my knowledge, that 512 number is not only non-participating landowners. That is 512 residences within proximity to the project that were close enough to potentially have, you know, a noise or shadow flicker effect. You know, as you can see from looking at the studies, the large majority of those 512 residences were not affected. But, you know, when when an engineer sets up a model, they draw a box around the project, and that box encompasses 512 residences that they feel need to be studied. And so that's where that number's coming from. It's not, it's not a count of the non-participating residences.
Okay, thank you. Are participating landowners allowed, per their agreements, to actually bring concerns to this meeting? Or have they signed away or signed a nondisclosure form that says they can't bring any concerns?
I'm not sure I totally understand the question. Could you repeat that?
Are are participating landowners allowed, per the agreements they signed? Are they allowed to come to this meeting or voice their concerns?
Yes, to my knowledge, participating landowners are allowed to come to the meetings, yes.
That it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any follow-up?
No, thank you.
You may step down. Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Berry?
No, I I think that concludes the the evidence that.
Well, no, we already called for people in the room. Well, I I I asked for people in the room. Okay, I'm not going to prevent you. Go go ahead and have a seat, but that's why I asked for people in the room. You gotta, you gotta go to a mic that's on, and it's got a red light. On your testimony on the. Get a little closer, please. I know I bug people about it, but it really is hard to hear.
Can we ask him to state his name, please?
Sure. Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm getting there. I asked him to get closer. State your name and where you either live or work or own property in relation to the proposed footprint of this project.
Bruce, B R U C E, Papich, P A P I E C H, FPC Services, GSG III and GSG VII Wind Turbines.
I I don't, I'm sorry. Most of that.
GSG III.
You gotta make your lips touch it. I know it's hard. I know.
GSG III and GSG VII Wind Turbines and FPC Services, 1771, Sublet Road, Sublet, Illinois. We have the turbine that was in question here. On the pin number, we have control over that entire 60 acres plus the acreage on the other side.
You're telling them things. Now, if you got a question, that's, just ask them a question.
The exclusion of that and limiting down to the 33 feet for going any zoning changes, you did not mention the maintenance building across Tower Road to the south side of Tower Road.
Now, you're telling, I'm not trying to be difficult, but you're not under oath. Now is the time to ask a question.
Then do I reserve it for later when I have a presentation at the end of what I'm talking about?
Now's the time to ask questions.
That's fine. Then I'll reserve till.
You're not have to reserve anything. Do you have any questions of him?
How are you going to put into your paperwork that you're limiting the zoning to the dimensions of the easement?
So it's my understanding that, you know, the applicant only has the ability to install infr- infrastructure and operate its project on property that it has land control over. So as as far as the applicant is concerned, the only land control we have on this said 60-acre parcel is a 33-foot wide strip of land that stretches, I believe, roughly 500 feet from the north side of Tower Road and then running northwest towards the ComEd substation for the use of, you know, a buried collection line. But that is the, to my knowledge, that is the extent of land control that the applicant has over this parcel. So we are bound by our rights and land control. So that is this 33-foot wide strip of land is is the extent to our control over the land.
My my question is, that's what you're saying, but in the application, it's says it's requesting a zoning change over the entire. So how is that going to be worded and set out?
So I'm not totally sure, you know, the the process or method that will be used to limit that. But, you know, in the petition, you have to create a list of every parcel that you are requesting special use for. And the only way to do that is to use the parcel's identification number. So, you know, we listed the parcel's identification number in the petition because we do have land control over a small portion of that parcel. And that is the the portion of the property in which the project, GSG Wind Farm, will have infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any follow-up now, Mr. Berry?
Oh, thank you.
Nope, you may step down. Thanks. All right, Mr. Berry, any further?
No further witnesses. I think that concludes the petitioner's presentation of evidence for, in support of the SUP application.
Okay, very good. That will leave us with any interested parties' evidence. It's almost break time, and I'm gonna, I'm going to make use of a few minutes to try and schedule two more sessions, which will take up fact-finding. As a preliminary, I will note that Ms. Duffy and I spent probably 35 minutes before the hearing trying to find dates where the courtroom, where staff were available. Because of the time of year, vacations, seminars, it was very difficult. Some conflicts with 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 various people, so I haven't even pulled the ZBA yet, but I would like to start with. Everybody get out your little handy dandy diaries, please. Thursday, June 2nd. And I'll go around the horn, just like I do for questions. Mr. Boonstra?
I will not be available, and I'm not sure if anybody else in my office would be available on that day.
Can you give me a, don't take this the wrong way, any better answer than that? We will not be available. Dates, we're running out of dates.
Sure, yeah, we've already got a scheduled meeting at that time.
What, you mean your office or?
Correct, yep.
Oh.
It's not just my office, but other offices within the building.
Okay. Certainly not your fault. I'm just, that's the problem we ran into. All right. Let's go. Let's go to Thursday, June 16th. And that's a curveball, Mrs. Duffy. I know it is. Let's start again. Mr. Boonstra?
I'm available.
Ms. Duffy, can you tell if the courtroom is Thursday, the 16th?
It's committee week, so.
I already have it set aside for zoning board that night. I think this is one of the dates we previously talked about.
Okay. Okay, how about you personally, Ms. Henkel?
I am available.
Ms. Duffy? You what? Okay. Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Available.
How about you? Let's see. Mr. Berry, you and yours?
Yes.
Kelly? I am. All right. Well, okay, then how about Monday, June 27? So we go from June 16th to June 27. June 27. How about the courtroom there, Alice or?
Available.
Okay. Mr. Boonstra?
I'm available.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Ms. Duffy? All right. Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Can do.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Berry at all?
Yeah, well, I'll I'll make it happen.
You'd be in the room where it happened, right? Kelly? Yeah. How about you, Kelly? All right. Okay, thanks. Break time? Well, let's make it 20 after, we'll resume. Take your seats. Interested parties in the room, anybody want to testify?
Oh.
This gentleman's got his hand up. I saw his hand first. Gentleman in the blue. Apparently not. Oh, yeah. I, I remind interested parties, I know you're not all legal professionals or don't appear in front of zoning board all the time. This is just the time for testimony. Just the time for testimony. All right, sir, you want to step on up and? Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Have a seat, please.
You very much.
I hope to get started. And like I have been encouraging, uh, all witnesses. I think you learned a little bit from asking questions, but you probably, you gotta get right next to that microphone. Would you state your name, please?
Bruce Pappich.
And, uh, um, with regard to the proposed, the footprint of the, this proposed repower project. Um, I did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did. Um, we're. Just a minute. Just a minute.
Okay.
Kelly, did I swear in? Okay. It's all right. I'm quite open to saying I've forgotten something. Thought I was starting to go nuts here. Uh, would you state where you either live, own property, or reside in relation to the footprint of this proposed repower project?
We own property at nineteen seventy-three Tower Road in Sablet, which is, has a transmission easement through it. We have the Adam Wind Turbine, which is adjacent to the easement. It's on the Luffelman property. And we have site control over the entire, um, acreage of the Luffelmans for the wind turbine.
So you own property either in or adjacent to this proposed project. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. Um, of course, I'm not sure what you want to testify about. Why don't you, uh, and sticking to facts, this is not the time for speeches. I always remind interested parties. It, it, it's a tough. This is the time to say, well, the light was green, not red, like they said. Um, these are fact times. Time for speeches will be coming. So go ahead.
On the nineteen seventy-three Tower Road, which is our maintenance building for our two wind turbines, um, Leeward.
So you have wind turbines on your property?
On, in the area on.
So they're not your wind turbines? So the maintenance garage next to some wind turbines?
It's the maintenance building for the two wind turbines.
Okay, I see.
They have a transmission easement fifty foot wide from the north side of Tower Road, south fifty feet coming through to where they angle towards the substation. And this was again in their presentation, asked for rezoning over the whole property versus just the fifty-foot easement.
Well, first of all, let's, let's, let's make some clear. I, I haven't heard any evidence about any rezoning. So, um, but I have a preliminary question. Are you saying the maintenance building is on your property?
Yes.
Okay, and it, and it's their maintenance building?
No, it is our maintenance building.
It's your maintenance building, but it has somewhere near to it, uh, an easement along the southern edge of your property. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
The map that I included in the packet.
What packet is that? This thing you've handed me?
Yes.
Okay. I will mark that as, uh, IP, which stands for interested party number one. Go ahead.
The, um, you can see, see on the map where it says Tower Road and US fifty-two, the triangle that's where they meet on the south side of Tower Road is where the maintenance building is. It's a one acre parcel, uh, cut off from other acreage that we had sold. And it has the easement on the south side of Tower Road. The parcel goes to the north side of Tower Road, so it's fifty feet from the north side of Tower Road, south, where they have their collection cable running through it. In their, um, their exhibit petition for special use, it lists the property there for changing it from Ag one to special use. We have our own special use on that property. And, uh, they only have control over the fifty feet, not the entire acreage. The other concern is that the easement that, uh, they testified about being thirty-three feet along, I have made a mark on the, uh, map with pen as to where the easement is approximately. That is where their thirty-three foot wide easement is. In the packet as well, we have our, uh, wind easement for that property, which shows us having wind control over the entire parcel on either side of fifty-two, with the exception of what is accepted out of the tracks, which is between Green Wing and fifty-two on the south side of fifty-two. That's another residence. Where we're looking at, just so we do not want the zoning to change on our property where it is requested in their.
Nobody's, I'll say again, nobody's requesting any zoning change.
Um, that's what it states on this paper. Petition for special use. So in my discussions with them, this was supposed to be handled. It was not handled. And we can look at it later, but I was, these are properties that we control. We have the land control of it through wind easements, turbine easements. And they only have transmission easements, which is underground. What I'm referring to as far as their request was in item one, reading from the petition for special use. The petition has site control and landowner permission to file a petition for special use permit on the entirety or portions of the following listed parcels. Participating landowners, which are described in exhibit A, parcel, uh, parcel identification numbers for each participating parcel are as follows, and it lists them. But it does not differentiate in these two parcels that it is doing it for a partial area, not the full area, and that's what we are concerned about.
You gotta tell me when you're finished. I just can't guess when you're finished.
I'm finished.
All right, questions? Mr. Boonstra?
No questions. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Henkel? Ms. Duffy? Mr. Forrester?
No.
Mr. Hughes?
No question.
Burrow?
No question.
Mr. Meyer?
No questions.
Mr. Pratt?
No question.
Mr. Berry?
No questions.
Um, you may step down. Thank you. Somebody else, uh, interested? Interested parties in the room, anybody else? Yep, that's what I thought. Come on up.
Any questions? You didn't ask?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have any questions of the gentleman who was up here? I'll put him back on the stand.
Dee?
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, you do, right? You're teasing, teasing or, teasing or not? Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, Dee. I, I know what you mean now. And I, I thought of that once she said that. Okay, you're still under oath. You can't ask them marital questions if you're married. You just.
Uh, uh, my name is Joyce Pappich from FPC Services, GSG three. And, um, we were the original developers of.
You're telling them things. Just ask them questions.
Um, for clarification, what is the turbine on that property a part of the GSG project? Or is it your turbine under a separate entity? is it your turbine under a separate entity?
It is our turbine under a separate entity, it is not part of GSG.
If you said that earlier, I was unclear. And so that was also the parcel that they referred to earlier as the 1922-05-4001?
011. Yes.
And your concern is that this turbine's been up for quite a while, and you didn't want any new zoning to change the turbine that is there?
Correct.
That's all.
Okay, on Zoom, interested party?
No, thank you.
Questions of this witness?
No, thank you.
Okay, now you may step down, and I apologize. Other interested parties want to testify in the room, come on up.
Before you leave, would you spell that gentleman's last name, write it down before we... Yeah, and this one too, please.
Yes, just go.
Based on his report? Thank you.
You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, old truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, have a seat. And again, I know you've already identified yourself, but now that you're on the witness stand, would you please state your name?
Lorraine Kettrell.
And Lorraine, state again, with regard to the footprint of the proposed development, where do you live, reside, or own property relative to it?
I live at 2180 Richardson Road, which is roughly maybe 18 feet from the windmill, let's see...
Wind turbine?
I don't have, one of the ones on Burkhardt Road.
Okay, 18 feet?
No, I'm sorry, 1,800.
1,800 feet, okay.
Sorry about that.
That's alright. And would you then, let's see, you've handed me a sheaf of one, two, three, about five pages, pieces of paper, maybe six?
Yes.
I will mark that IP number two, and maybe you want to start by telling us what these pages represent?
It has to do with the appraisal of, well, with the appraisal that was submitted. He, the appraiser stated that there would be no impact on properties that were roughly within, what, 1,500 feet, 2,000 feet of the windmills. I went through all of the addresses that he had, and took the ones that have small acreage, because I have a little bit over five acres, whatever you want to call it, hobby farm, or whatever, horses, that type of thing. So when I went through, if you look at page one, the first page, the properties lost quite a bit of money when they were resold. That's a concern to me, that's actually a huge concern. I'm old, I'm gonna move at some point, and I would like to get a fair value for my property. So of course, I would request that they don't replace the windmill that's directly in front of my house. I'm nervous, let's see. Alright, so we have these properties, on one of the properties that their assessor said he was going to get back to was the 965 Bingham Road in Paw Paw, that's dropped roughly 70,000 in order to sell. On page two and three, he said it was an anomaly, and granted, there are a lot of turbines around there, but there are a couple also that I looked up that had multiple turbines, such as 1055 County Line, which sold probably about $70,000 less than it originally, the original price. There's a, okay, Beth Einsley has a statement, okay, first off, okay, on page two, there's comparable properties, and it tells you exactly how long it took for those properties to sell.
I don't have a page two unless you're, unless mine are out of order. Okay, thank you.
So comparable properties, the only difference is the windmills, the turbines that were around it. Beth Einsley made a statement, which she says the one major factor remains most influential difference of all the property features. And then on page three, on the bottom, last paragraph, she gives a statement, and Beth Einsley is a very well-known Realtor out in the Paw Paw area, she's been probably 30, 40 years. She has, "As a member of the local Realtor Board, I had an opportunity to show the parcel during the market period. On three occasions, prospective buyers were not willing to consider this home for purchase due to the following objections: noise from the turbines, flashing lights during the night, and having animals, horses, small livestock affected by the noise and the lights. The buyers selected other properties five to 10 miles from the wind turbine farm, which provided a more privacy and a more quiet environment for animals and family members."
Judge, can I ask for this, I didn't quite understand the source of that statement, is that in the materials here, or is...
I get the question, I was just letting her testify, so you can certainly cross-examine her.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. That's right.
Okay, so turbines do affect small acreage properties, because most people, when you're buying a five-acre parcel out in the country, you're trying to get away from people, structures, industry, the whole thing like that, and that is going to affect properties. Bingham Road took three years to sell, that's considered a property loss in itself, just having the time, if it can't be sold within the 90 days, or whatever. So, let's see here, on page four, which was taken directly out of the assessor's testimony, or his reports, he's got the second paragraph says that, this is for the little subdivision that's out in Paw Paw that, let's see the name, the Brook Meadows subdivision, and he said those properties sold no problem, and they are in view of a turbine, so there's no, turbines don't make people buy properties. But if you look at the distance of all of those turbines, there's nothing closer than 4,000 feet, the only one is the 965 Bingham Road. So I would like to have that turbine directly in front of me, not replaced, since they are going to get rid of three turbines, that would be one that I would like to not have, because I need to get full market value for my property. Now, I have found that there's multiple ways to do that, there's such a thing as a property value guarantee, that a lot of the turbine companies, well, they were signing them, and they were suggesting it, and they stopped doing it because they always ended up having to pay out. You know, I'm a very unwilling participant in this whole windmill thing, because it's going to affect me, and not just me, I have Paul Lehman, I would, he's pretty popular, I would imagine some of you guys know him, it's going to affect his property too. So I guess that's it.
Alright, questions of this witness, Mr. Boonstra?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do you, with this data, are you able to prove that it is the wind turbines itself causing the decrease in price, or have you accounted for other things such as foreclosure?
No, I have not.
Okay, nothing further.
Ms. Duffy? Mr. Forster?
Nothing.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, I'm looking at some of the timing differences on these properties, you said you were a Realtor, correct?
No, I am not a Realtor, no, no, no.
Oh, is that...
No.
Is that a statement by somebody that you're providing it?
Yeah.
I'm gonna, nevermind, I'm gonna pass.
Mr. Burrow?
I've got a little bit more on that.
Craig, you got it.
Oh, this one doesn't work.
Let's put it right on top of your notepad.
Anyway, Glenn, look, the dates on those, there was two different things going on, I don't know if Beth Einsley mentioned both of them, one was the windmills in '07, and the other one was the real estate crash in '08, '09, and I just wondered, did she mention the other possibility of the softer values after '08, '09, '10?
I didn't hear the question, I don't know if she did.
No, I don't.
She didn't, Realtor didn't mention that the '08, '09 crash in the real estate market really hurt values nationwide at that time, but there's two things going on at those dates.
One question at a time, I'm not trying to be difficult, but she can only ask one, answer one at a time.
Not that I am aware of, I got this off of the internet.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
No questions.
Mr. Pratt?
No question.
Mr. Berry?
Yes, a couple of quick questions, just to confirm, you are not a licensed real estate broker in the state of Illinois?
No.
Are you a licensed appraiser in the state of Illinois?
No.
And did you actually speak to any of the real estate brokers that are referred to or discussed in your materials?
No.
So I think you just said that you pulled this information off the internet?
Correct.
Thank you.
Off the internets and off of your appraisers' reports.
Oh, sure.
One more thing, sorry.
No, just a minute, you might be able to, but...
Okay.
So, so Beth Einsely or Einsell?
Einsley.
Einsley?
Mm-hmm.
It, this is something off the internet from her?
It came with, it shows the parcel, I have actually...
Just, that's a yes or no?
Yes, it came off the internet.
Okay, alright. You wanted to say something else after?
I just wanted, for the record, I just wanted to object.
No, no, I was...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, she wanted, you wanted to follow up with something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say on page eight, or page six, it's testimony from, I can find it. Michael McCann, who's an assessor, he actually did a testimony in Lee County in 2012 about property values. He is very confident that it will affect, the turbines do affect property sales. That's it.
You said Exhibit Six is his testimony, would you agree that's not testimony, that's an article off the internet from Michael McCann?
Well, submitting my written testimony as a professional real estate appraiser. I all look for...
Do you know if he was under oath when he wrote this?
No, I have no idea.
Okay.
I was going, I looked for...
Interested parties, questions of this witness in the room, either of you? Interested party on Zoom, questions of the witness?
Yes, please.
Yep.
First is, are you a non-participating resident, and did you have any say with the wind turbines going up around you?
I had no say, and I am a non-participating resident.
Do you have the disposable income to go out and hire an expert on real estate appraisal?
Not really. I would if I could sell my house.
Yeah, and would you buy another house in the footprint of an industrial wood, industrial wind plant?
Absolutely not. When I found my property, it was bare land, and I just fell in love with it, because it's a beautiful piece of property, if you look to the north, it's just beautiful, you look to the south, you see a lot of windmills, not so pretty.
Are you aware of any owners or developers of Leeward LLC that live within the footprint of the wind plant?
No, I am not.
Are you aware of any Lee County leadership, councilmen, board members that live within the footprint?
No, I am not.
Do you see a lot of new houses going up within the footprint?
No.
Have you seen any?
I don't see any new houses going up in any of the surrounding wind turbine spots in Bureau County, and no, I don't see any new houses being built.
Thank you very much.
That it then?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, and you may step down.
Thank you.
Alright, let's see, any other people, interested parties in the room, want to testify? Raise your hand, or forever hold your peace. Okay, on Zoom, the only Zoomer? Do you wish to...
I'm not prepared, I wasn't aware that there would be testimony tonight, so I guess I have to ask.
Yeah, as I explained in the opening remarks, this is, yeah, this is it, but thank you, hope you understand.
Thank you, I do.
Alright, closing statements, closing comments, public comments, closing arguments, call it what you will, Mr. Berry?
Yes, thank you, Judge. So through its permit application materials and testimony and evidence submitted at this hearing, the applicant submits that it has demonstrated it has met the standards required for granting a special use permit for both deconstructing and repowering the GSG wind project. So I'll quickly review some of the evidence, the, under the, the contents of the permit application itself show that, including all the exhibits, show that the project has met the wind ordinance standards for purposes of what's necessary to be included in an SUP application. In terms of setbacks, we talked a little bit about this, and Mr. Wells discussed the setbacks, and the record shows that in the end, in Lee County, there will be fewer wind turbines if the project is repowered, and the, at least the average setbacks from, of those wind turbines to non-participating landowners will be increased quite a bit. We heard testimony from the wildlife expert that the US Fish and Wildlife Service has been consulted, as well as Department of Natural Resources, and as he testified, and as the materials in the permit application demonstrate, the project will substantially comply with the recommendations provided by IDNR to the county. Since we just discussed it, I'll continue discussion about property values, we heard from the petitioner's property value expert, Dr. Peter Paletti, as a reminder, Dr. Paletti is an elected, I believe he's an elected township official in Illinois, he has an MAI designation from the Appraisal Institute, which is the highest designation available, and his report shows, and he testified, that there is no statistically significant impact on property values, one way or another, from his examination of exist, of many sales, actual sales, around existing wind farms in Illinois. And so let's look at that data, it's in the report, he looked at over 200 sales, actual sales of homes around the Twin Groves... Uh, around the Twin Groves, uh, phases one and two wind project in McLean County. And again, after examining those sales and after putting them through his statistical analysis. Uh, and the formulas that are identified in his report, he concluded that there is no statistically significant measurable impact on surrounding property values. Due to their location, uh, near a wind project. And again, over, you know, the, the, the data are in the report. Their actual sales of homes and he, um, I don't know if they're in this report, but in previous reports, he had looked at some data. From the early two thou, or mid to late 2000s, but he, uh, more recently examined. Uh, additional data during the period of 2015 through 2017, so much more recent data. And they show the same thing, no statistically significant impact. He also looked at actual sales data over, I believe it's over 100 sales. Near the Mendota Hills Wind Project in Lee County. And again, same conclusion, no measurable statistical differ, difference in sales prices. Compared to projects located in proximity to when pro, uh, houses located, uh, located in proximity to wind projects versus those. Not located in proximity to wind project. And, uh, this, this Bingham Road house has come up, uh, previously by one of the, uh, interested parties and. She discussed it this evening and it's included in her materials. And, you know, you know, again, there, there's, that, that house was on the market. Um, for a period of time, but as, as a reminder, as Dr. Paletti testified. He concluded that that house was overpriced at, when it was first put on the market. Um, if you recall, he testified that that, the builder of that house was trying to market it essentially to people in the Chicago area, the Fox River Valley. And then most importantly, if you look at, uh, page 51 of his report, he identifies four or five other comparable houses that sold. Very similar in size to that, uh, Bingham Road house that are not located near a wind project and they all sold for about the same price. In fact, the average square foot price, uh, compared to the Bingham Road house is like 15 cents per square foot difference. So just a completely de minimis, uh, difference in price. And which, again, further supports his conclusion that there's just, uh, no impact. And if there's no impact on that house. Where, uh, the, uh, you know, the, the turbines are located much more closely than the turbines will be located in. In the, uh, in the, if this repower is approved and, and constructed, then there's, there's unlikely to be an impact on other houses. Um, you know, one, one other thing to point out with respect to property values, I, I understand the concerns of, uh, some of the interested parties. But the reality is, the GSG wind project has been operating for 15 years. We're not talking about a situation where a new project is going to come in where there's, there's been nothing here. It's been operating for 15 years and it will continue to operate for some time at least if, if there is no repower. But in the, if there is a repower, you'll have, again, fewer turbines, uh, and they'll be farther away from the houses. Uh, or at least for the non-participating houses on, on, on average. So. Um, and I think there was a comment made about no new subdivisions being built. I believe Dr. Paletti testified. That he's observed, uh, new construction of, of a subdivision. That's located, I don't remember how far away he said it was from the GSG wind project, but it's within a forested area and he, he said there were some. Um, I believe he testified that there were some pretty expensive houses, three, 400,000 houses, thousand dollar houses that are being built there. So. I mean, I, 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 I just, I would just say again, he's, he's an expert, he's testified. Um, as he said, at a number of wind and solar projects in Illinois, he testified at other types of projects and, and. Read the data for yourself. He's, he's not just doing comparables, he's looking at actual sales data. And, and calculating, uh, statistical, uh. Results based on, uh, statistical formula and he, just in the end, when you crunch that data, there's no measurable impact. So, uh, we also heard about Shadow Flicker. The, uh, expert testified that the project will comply. There was, I think, one house that was, uh, above the 30-hour limit. Um, I think Mr. Wells testified that that homeowner will, um. Has signed a waiver, but if, if, uh, if that's not effective and there's more than 30 hours. Then the project will have an obligation to, uh, curtail the turbines so that the 30-hour limit is met. Um, we talked about, uh, uh, we had a, an, an expert from Burns and McDonnell who discussed the, the sound study. Again. He, he testified that the project will comply with the Illinois pollution control board rules. For some of the turbines, they may have to operate in, um, noise reduction operation mode at night, but. To that extent that that's required, the, in, in the end, the project will, uh, be required to comply with the rules at all times and, and. Uh, the, the model shows that it will. Um, and then we talked about two different types of decommissioning. Uh, the decommissioning, uh, plan for the new project. Uh, was, was, was discussed and submitted by, uh, Ms. Rose. And, um, the project is required under the ordinance to submit, uh, an updated plan once the. Um, the final design and, and local turbine locations, turbine model and locations are, are, are selected. Uh, and that will be submitted and, and, and for approval by the, um, the, the zoning officer and the county engineer. And then with the decommissioning of the existing project, we heard. Uh, Ms. Buck to talk about tonight, the, the, the two recommended methods. Um, and Mr. Wells testified that, um, the, the project will submit another decommissioning plan to make it clear that. Uh, that it will comply with the, the, the study that was performed by Ms. Buck's, uh, engineering firm, Sergeant Lundie. Um, and, and so, um, that, that will be submitted as Mr. Wells indicated in advance of the, um. Of the building, issuance of the building permits for the construction of the repower. Um, just, just, and just a couple additional points about this issue with the, the easement. I, I think the judge covered this. The applicant is not seeking to rezone any of the, um, parcels in the project. Um, the, the applicant is simply seeking to, to make it clear that, uh, it, it has an easement. And it's, and that easement is limited, uh, in, in, in nature, that, that, uh, the, the, the fact of the matter is that when you. Submit a permit application for a wind project, you have to identify the, the, each parcel by its parcel ID number. Well, there's not a mechanism for identifying a portion of the parcel, but the reality is that. The, if the permit is granted, and I, I don't know if you, you, if you, uh, heard the gentleman's testimony, he said. It, it's that the, the applicant submits, uh, parcels or portions of parcels. Well, for that particular parcel that was under discussion, it's just a portion that, that represents the easement that the applicant has over. A 500-foot strip over a piece of property and I think, um, this other property that was brought up as well. So the permit would only be good and applicable to those, uh, portions of the parcel. That the applicant has land control over. So, I, I, again, it's just, it's. I think it's probably also for notice, for, for public notice purposes that you, you're required to, um, identify the entirety of a particular parcel, but there's. There's just, there's not a good way to, to split it up, but the reality is, they can't put any infrastructure. On any part of a parcel over which they don't have permission or land control. Um, so, and, and just as an aside, I mean. I, I'm sure you'll agree that this is not a forum, that, that this hearing is not a forum for determining. What, who has legal rights over which parcel. I mean, these are documents that are recorded in, with the county recorder's office. Um, and, you know, the applicant submits that it's got the, um. It, it has permission to use the parcels that are included in the application and to the extent that it's determined that it's not. Well, then it can't put infrastructure on those parcels. I mean, it's pretty, in my view, pretty simple. So the last thing I want to cover is just as a reminder that the, the applicant in the, uh, permit application materials has two variance requests. Uh, both of those variance requests have been, um, sort of pre-approved or at least. Uh, they have the consent of the Illinois Department of Agriculture, uh, through the amendment to the, um, the AMA. Uh, and, and one of, uh, I, I think we talked about possibly dividing them into two different requests. The first one is. To allow the project to reuse, uh, existing cables, uh, that are less than five feet deep. And be, because, in part because the landowners, um, I think to a person prefer that, they'd rather, uh, leave those in. In place and reuse them if possible versus pulling them out and potentially damage their, uh, field tile. And then the second request is to leave, for seeking a variance for permission to leave the cables in place that aren't re- removed. Um, or reused, excuse me, uh, even though they're less than, I think, four, four or five feet deep under the, the ordinance. So. Uh, I just want, as a reminder, wanted to, um, or, uh, just wanted to remind the board that that variance, those, that variance request. Or those variance requests are part of the application. So in closing, I, I want to thank the, uh, the board and everyone, uh, the, the judge. Cali, uh, the state's attorney, the zoning officials, uh, especially tonight, uh, given the lack of air conditioning. Uh, thank you for your time and effort and, and that you put into this. And I know it's a, it's a, it can be a thankless task. Uh, and it involves a lot of work, uh, but just, uh, in, in, in summary, I, oh, I also want to thank the IT director. For, uh, for the help with the projection, but, but in, in summary, I'd like to just, again, uh, on behalf of the applicant. Submit that, that the petition, the application materials and the evidence that was submitted, these. Uh, hearings demonstrate that the, the, the project has complied with and will comply with the, uh. The Lee County zoning code provisions that apply to the project and, and to, uh, request that the, the ZBA. Awarded a variance or variances as requested. And again, thank you for your time.
All right, uh, public comment from interested parties in the room. Gibson? Now was the time. And remember, and I'm, I'm not trying to say you'll do it or not do it now, now you can make, now's the time to tell the board what you think they should or shouldn't do. And why you think they should or shouldn't do it. That's why lawyers call it, uh, closing statements or closing arguments. However, the caution is, you can't bring up new evidence because you're not under oath and you're not subject to cross-examination. So you have to make your comments from the evidence that's been produced or. As the jury instruction in the courtroom goes, or reasonable inferences therefrom. So, go ahead.
Okay, um, on the assessor's report. If you go to the big book and go to page 21 of the assessor's report. He states, "The target boundary distance from the turbine varies depending on the above stated criteria. But generally ranges from about one mile to one and a half miles." That was for the Twin Groves Wind Farm in McLean County. Then. The next page states, "An analysis was prepared of single-family residential property sales. The available sample of agriculture property sales and small residential tract sales was too small to permit a meaningful comparison." So. His, uh. Assessment doesn't. You know, that's, I would love to have a turbine three quarters of a mile away from me. That would be fine. Those one and a half miles, that's fine too, because I don't think that will affect property values. But when they're 1,500 feet, 2,000 feet, that becomes a problem. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, and I applaud you for sticking to the evidence that was produced. Thank you. Um, anybody, any other parties want to make arguments in the room, first of all? All right, out of the room, there's only one Zoomer. Would you like to make any public comment?
Um, yes, please. It's, I haven't had a chance to totally formulate. I'll do my best. Is there ever a chance to ask the board members about the past experience?
No, same as you can't ask a jury in a, in a jury trial questions. Nope.
All right. It's my understanding that it's standard industry practice for participating landowners to sign non-disclosure forms or gag orders. Unless this project is unusual, uh, then we have participating landowners that maybe didn't have a voice. There's not the testimony. Who pays for the testimony or the experts to actually. Analyze the data presented by this company? Those are my, those are my statements. That we, these are outstanding questions and, um. The land evaluation, the home devaluation. In my experience, wouldn't.
Now you're testifying.
Okay, uh, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that, I thought you were taking a breath and gonna say something else.
No, I'm sorry. I don't know how to phrase that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, well, that concludes the phase one of the ZBA hearings, the taking of evidence. And, uh. Closing arguments, public comments. So I will now recess for the next stage, which is. Um, the zoning board of appeals, fact-finding and recommendation, um, sessions. Um, that usually takes two nights. Um, for those unfamiliar with the process, and I think there were a couple of people that may not have been here when I gave my opening remarks. Please, please, um, the, the, these practically volunteer five gentlemen, um. Act as fact-finders, not unlike a jury in a courtroom. Um, they've been asked not to have any ex parte conversations or take any. Comments from folks outside of this hearing process. Please, they're, they're your, they're your neighbors, they're your friends, your, your fellow citizens of Lee County. Please, please, uh, respect their integrity, uh, what they're trying to do for all the citizens of Lee County here. And, um, avoid, uh, try, even though you might, might have a desire, avoid. Uh, trying to contact them whether verbally or in writing. Um, they've been asked if, if you do do so, just to please say, I'm sorry, I can't talk about something that's under consideration by the ZBA. With that, um, I will recess for fact-finding and recommendations. Let me make sure I get the right dates. The next one will be Thursday, June 16th. Seven o'clock, right, gentlemen? We, you do the summers at seven. Um, seven o'clock here on the third floor of hearing room. Hopefully it'll be cooler then, of the old Lee County courthouse. The anticipated or available next date would be, uh, uh, Monday, June 20th. But for sure, it's the sixth, 16th. 27th, right? But for sure, yeah. The two dates are June 16th and available is June 27th. But for sure, we're recessing till June 16th, seven o'clock, third floor, old Lee County courthouse. Have a good month.